All right, it is 6:31 on the evening of February 4th. This is a regular meeting of the Arlington City Council. I'm Mayor Rich Nakle, I'll be presiding at the meeting. And I'll call the meeting to order, and would you please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, welcome everyone. This time we'll have a roll call. Councilmember Cowell.
Here.
Councilmember Haddelstad.
Here.
Councilmember Yashewski.
Here.
Councilmember Hyland.
Here.
Councilmember Batchor.
Here.
All members are here. Also at the table, at my left, is City Administrator Pat Melvin. On my right, City Attorney Ross Arneson. We have some guests in the audience. I know there's some that are here to talk to us about a purchase of the TSE building. And I'll ask them to introduce themselves when that comes up. Kirby Wecworth, our maintenance supervisor is here. John Zaski, police chief. Fire chief, I'm sorry. You got promoters. You forgot promoter just for a little while there. Kurt Mangre, representing the enterprise, and Amy Newsom, our EDA director. So with those introductions done, I would then ask for a motion to... Or is there any changes in the agenda? Agenda additions, agenda changes?
I didn't see minutes in there attached.
I'm sorry, yep, item B.
A, B, A and B.
There was one set in the main.
C is the set from the 22nd of January.
Okay, so A and B are not...
So if we can take A and B off.
Scratch A and B and re- re-identify those.
We're getting closer, but we haven't quite...
And I'll make a motion to improve the agenda.
Also be...
Oh, sorry.
Motion made in second, that's all right. I'm just going to tell you that we will move the TSE building item up to right after item five. We'll call it item 5A. And then we'll talk about the TSE building. Amy has obligations after this meeting, so we will get to that. Second, who had the second? Motion made in second on the agenda?
I did.
In second?
I made the motion and he seconded it.
Okay, all right. Motion by Councilmember Batchor, second by Councilmember Yashewski, to approve the agenda as amended. On favor say aye.
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 Motion carried. Move on to the consent agenda. Consent agenda tonight is consisting of three items then. Would be the approval of the January 22nd, regular meeting minutes. Item B, approval of the bills. And item C, approval of gambling permit for Sibley Medical Center. Should be Ridgeview Sibley Medical Center, I believe. Ridgeview Sibley Medical Center for the Arly Dazzle Saturday, December 7th, 2019.
Prove the consent agenda as amended?
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Hyland, second by Councilmember Batchor, to approve the consent agenda as amended. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Mission car- motion carried. And with that, we're going to move into addressing the council. We do have a statement here that someone had submitted, a comment.
Councilmembers, I just wanted to share with you that we did receive an email from a resident who does watch our council meetings on the cable channel. She expressed appreciation if we would not include documents. Sometimes if you look up on the screen or on the TV monitor behind me, when we're looking or talking about certain documents, I'll have the camera focused on the council as well as on the document that we're talking about. She basically is saying that that doesn't work on a TV, a larger sized TV that she has. And so unless I hear differently, I'm just going to keep it focused on either the council or the speaker and have less attention on the actual document. So I can certainly pull it up here for you if you want to see different things. She also said that she'd like it if everybody would be reminded to speak into your microphone. And sometimes it's difficult if you're...
No.
If you're pulling a Jim Highland, then it becomes very difficult. But so if you would, please speak into your microphones as well. Thank you.
Okay.
What's her name? I want to send her a thank you letter.
A letter.
All right, with that out of the way, we will move on to item 5A. And I'm going to turn it over to Amy Newsom. Did you want to discuss the topic of the TSE building? Yes, would you introduce them, please?
Just before they get started, I want to have a few minutes. I have to get to the EDA meeting tonight, so I'm going to take her very long. But these guys were at our... We had a special EDA meeting on Friday night. And the EDA voted that the council hardly accept their proposal. So I'm actually going to let these guys introduce themselves. I actually, I really like this because Arlington needs young business owners. And these guys are young business owners that are local. Chances of it being successful are better than if someone comes from far away to start a business in Arlington. They're committed, they're familiar with Sibley County, they know the area. I'm going to let Lindsay introduce these guys, because I know we have two couples and both are getting married soon.
Yeah. I'm Lindsay Thomas, and this is my fiancee Jacob Sostrom. This is Austin Frounings, and his fiancee Kelly Benneke could not be here tonight, so...
It's good to be glad to pull a microphone right up to and screen it if you would.
Do you want me to repeat it? Do you want me to go again? I'm Lindsay Thomas, and this is my fiancee Jacob Sostrom. This is Austin Frounings, and his fiancee Kelly Benneke is also a part of our enterprise, and she cannot be here tonight. So we have a proposal for you, and Jacob's going to read it, so...
Does everybody have a copy of it?
Yeah.
Okay. Do we want to read it then, or?
No.
It's up to you.
I reviewed it. I heard our...
I did, yeah, I think we all reviewed it.
Then you can touch over the highlights.
I'll hit the highlights of it. So we have a group of four of us, like Lindsay said, and one of them's not here tonight. But we created SNF Enterprises, LLP. And basically, Austin and Lindsay are the two main business owners that would be looking at putting a suite inside of the TSE building. Austin has a trucking company, which is basically located out of Arlington and Gaylord. And then Lindsay is with True Real Estate, which is based out of Main Cato, but should be putting an office in Arlington here as well. And with that, I guess that's about where we're at. Austin, you maybe can touch on your business a little bit more if you want. And then Lindsay? So I've got a trucking company that I've got five employees, including myself. And I haul, I supply Northland Dry in town here with all their potatoes that they do dry to make dog food. So I'm in town quite often, checking in on that place, doing all sorts of stuff there, hauling just about any of their needs in. And then I guess I'm based out of my home right now. And I'd like to be, like to move to a central office where it's not so much of a headache for all the paperwork or the record keeping.
As they say, I do real estate with True Real Estate. I'm part of the Cara Bishop team. I would say about 95% of my sales are done in Sibley County. So it would just be great to have a central location to better serve my clients. Also to put my own office somewhere as well. And yeah, just like I said, better to serve my clients. And I would really be looking forward to it. But yeah, this is kind of something we've been looking for and for focusing on trying... For a couple of years now, we've been looking for a building. And we wanted something that we could do our businesses in, but also potentially do rentals as for apartments or more offices, or just something else. So that was our goal with this, and...
Can I just say something?
Yeah.
Because I know one of the things will come up is do they fall under the commercial lots policy? And we did talk about that at the EDA meeting on Friday night, that they're looking at getting it for $10,000. So they'd have to have at least five time, five full-time equivalents based in the city of Arlington. Did you want to address that?
Yes, so I got five employees myself, or myself included, that would be based out of Arlington. And then Lindsay herself with True Real Estate.
So we would have six right there.
Two businesses. And all your people are full-time?
Yes, yep, full-time.
What are some of the other plans you have for the building? I know you had some possibility of some apartments, is that correct?
Yeah. So the back part of the building, it'd be ideal to utilize a majority of the building. I mean, obviously, two office suites would be peanuts for 10,000 square feet. I mean, maybe need 400, 500 square feet total for two suites. We were looking for six apartments to put in there. I know there's 11 parking spots in the alley. There's also parking in the loadout bay, or the dock, loading dock there. So that would give us 13 spots total. Off the street, I know it's two parking spots per family or per unit, rental unit. So I guess that's kind of where we're still, or why we're here, I guess. Um, the next thing would be the, doing the planning and zoning, because we would have to get it zoned, commercial and residential. And that's where, you know, obviously, our plan is contingent on that.
My question, how is the sale being handled? Is it...
That's a good point.
Yes, yeah.
No, you guys can hear me, right? Can you hear me? You can't hear me yet either. I'll talk really loud. Then I want to address...
Sure.
She was supposed to take over, as you know, as the Realtor for February 1st. So we had this discussion last week.
So I was supposed to take it over as of February 1st. About a week ago, I came to Amy, because we have all been talking about it, and I didn't want conflict. So I went to her, addressed it, and we decided to kind of hold off until we saw how this went. And then we said if we did need to get it listed in the meantime. I had talked with these guys, and basically, we figured out what the commission would be on it. And then if we had to get it listed, we were willing to add that price onto our asking price, and then we would give it back to you, basically. So as of right now, we don't have it listed, but we did talk about it as a potential thing, so...
So they would not be paying?
You wouldn't pay my commission, yeah.
You'd still be getting your $10,000 regardless, either way.
Yeah.
So I think right now it's zoned as CBD, Central Business District. So in the Central Business District, if I, if I'm right, it does allow residential to be part of it. Right, because all, the majority of the businesses on Main Street have apartments above their business.
Wouldn't this fall under the same situation as the NOOC block?
Well, that, well, NOOC, because they're not commercial, they're not Central Business District.
Right now, they're...
Residential, aren't they?
No, there's a...
Yeah, they're PUD.
Plan unit.
Plan unit development, yep.
So that's different. But right now, the building, the TSE building is in the Central Business District, which...
Yes.
Yep, which, I mean, I, I mean, I'm not for certain, but I mean, I believe that the residential piece would fall in there. So as far as rezoning, I don't know if it would have to be.
Doesn't help, okay.
Is this on the planning and zoning agenda for this upcoming meeting? Does anyone know?
I can look.
I know there was an agenda that went out.
I think this upcoming meeting, I think they are specifically meeting with rental owners.
Right, I don't see it on the agenda.
Okay.
Ross, do you know if that would have to be? Because it was a business, it was strictly business use when TSE admin was in there.
Now, I haven't had a chance since last Friday to look it up. But well, as we had discussed, even if it's not automatically allowed in the Central Business District, we certainly have many similar situations already existing.
Correct.
So I don't see there to be any strong argument to deny, you know, this particular rezoning if one is needed.
Any other questions?
Andrew, you have the trucking company, right?
Yes, yep.
Now, if your business is located there, your office, we're going to have semi-trailers up and down the road?
Absolutely not, no, absolutely not.
You got that in writing?
No, no, there shouldn't be any semi-parking on the street.
Well, I'll tell you, I just, I vote yes. Oh wait, we can't do that. No, I admire your intestinal fortitude to jump into this. I had talked to several, a few people about doing exactly what you guys are doing with that building, so... Do some apartments and office space.
Any other questions? Now, would there need to be a formal purchase agreement drawn up?
Well, I think there should be. And we had discussed on Friday, there'd be two contingencies. One would be that they would receive any needed zoning approval. But secondly, they were going to have some engineering study of the building to determine if their business plan is economically feasible. You know, a conversion of the building physically in the way that they plan.
Okay.
Which we did, I had one contractor go through there, and he said that it should be perfectly fine. Obviously, he's not a full engineer, but he said that there's no way that it would be impossible to not have apartments in the back there. So it would be feasible.
Well, may want to still have that contingency in there.
Yep, absolutely.
Till you get a complete study of that.
Yep.
Because we discussed that, and in fact, whoever you get for engineering advice should communicate with the city building inspector, Darren Hassler.
Yep.
Because in the end, he's going to weigh in on, you know, whether your plan meets the building code or not, so...
Yeah, I think that's more for your guys' protection, right?
Yeah, absolutely, yep.
So my understanding is based on the EDA's recommendation for sale of the TSE product, project, TSE building, if we would, as a council, approve it tonight, that would be all we need to do, is that correct?
Basically approve it and direct...
And direct, all right.
I'll make a motion to...
Okay, and this is item 15, by the way, on the back of the agenda. So we can, we'll move it up for action right now.
To approve the EDA recommendation for sale of the TSE building for $10,000 under the commercial lots policy?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, motion by Councilmember Cowell, second by Councilmember Batchor, to approve the sale of the TSE building. And this is upon recommendation of the EDA. And then we would be directing a formal purchase agreement to be drawn up. Any comments, questions?
Get it done.
Discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion's carried unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Good luck.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to item 6, the announcements.
Councilmembers, just wanted to make you aware that we have coming up an opportunity for you to get together with local legislators at the Best Western Capitol Ridge in St. Paul. A number of legislators will be talking about transportation. Some of the ongoing issues there is where is all the funding coming from? And our roads are in need of significant repair. So if anybody is interested in attending that day at the Capitol, please let myself or Laura know, and we would be happy to get you signed up to attend that event. Second item is that the Sibley County Community Development and the University of Minnesota Extension is planning a training session on succession planning, which we know is an important issue as we have business leaders here in Arlington retiring and looking for individuals to assume their businesses. But those individuals aren't necessarily there. So please, you are invited. Amy Newsom has reached out and wants to encourage you to attend on Friday, February 8th, from 11:00 to 1:00 p.m. at the Sibley County Service Center. The training will be held in the Sibley Room there in Gaylord. So if you can attend, please do so. Also included in your packet was a meeting agenda. The, on February 11th, we'll be meeting with the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency to talk a little bit about our wastewater treatment facility permit. As I think we've talked about briefly at the last meeting, we have certain limits, the phosphorus limits, as well as the chloride limits, have been changed by the state. We are able, as a community, to meet the phosphorus limits, but we will have to request an extension on the chloride limits. Chloride limits are basically a result of the water softeners that everybody has in their homes. The only option, as we currently know it, is for us to soften the water before we put it into the homes. One of the communities that does that is Hutchinson. In talking with Leo or Loff, he said that, yeah, that would be an option for us, but it's going to cost us probably over a million dollars to make changes to our facility to accommodate that. So by requesting an extension, that will give us five years to figure it out or to find a more reasonable costing solution for that problem. So feel free if you would like to attend that meeting. An agenda was included in the packet. Next announcement is that city offices will be closed on Monday, February 18th, for the President's Day holiday. Because of being closed on February 18th, which would normally be a council meeting, we will be looking to push that out to Tuesday, February 19th at 6:30. The Arlington Lions Fish Fry is scheduled for Friday, February 22nd, from 11:00 to 7:30 here at the Arlington Community Center. At that same meeting, they will be awarding the Darwin Mathwig Award. And that will be awarded at 5:00 o'clock, again on February 22nd. Last but not least, under the announcements, we have the Ridgeview Sibley Medical Foundation Spring Benefit, which is scheduled for Friday, April 12th, starting at 5:00 p.m. at the Arlington Community Center. Tickets are available at all Ridgeview Sibley locations, local businesses, and from foundation members.
My wife is a member, I can get a ticket for anybody.
Wonderful.
Yeah.
So see Ben if you're interested in attending.
Dueling piano was the...
Okay, communications. Maintenance Department update, Mr. Wecworth. Welcome.
Thank you.
Just in case you're wondering why Adam is handing off his microphone. We did have a microphone that somehow got damaged over the weekend, and so we are in the process of repairing that. Also, at that same time, I have brought up that it seems at times when individuals are talking, we get that crackling sound. So they'll be coming out to address both of those issues.
I have not heard that tonight so far, so...
I haven't either.
Let's try and replicate this.
I think it was mine personally, because I would turn it on and off because I could hear that.
Oh, well, maybe they broke the right one. Whoever they are, whoever they are.
Whoever they are.
All right. Well, I think the last month, we've pretty well been busy with quite a bit of snow and ice control. For a slow start to the season, it sure seems to be picking up. So that's kind of been taking up some time on that. Things are going good. Equipment's holding up. Our new plow truck, the Ford plow truck, is working great. No problems there. I know we're, bids are out for snow hauling and contracting for snow removal. But I'd just like to say, the last two years that I've been in charge and working with Claire Grading and Hagen Miller, it's, everything's gone really well. So really happy with how things work with those guys. Picnic tables came in for the Parks Department. We got those assembled, four new picnic tables for Four Seasons Park. We helped the Police Department install a ventilation fan in their evidence room. I guess it was, you know, it was getting really musty in there and a lot of bad smells. So we were able to get a ventilation fan put in there for John. Been trying to keep up on the ice rink, keep that, keep the skater skating there when it's warm enough for them to skate anyways. Been obtaining a couple quotes for pallet racking that I know our department's been shooting for for the last couple of years. This would be the ideal time to assemble some of that, if we can get some. I don't have prices yet, but I got two people coming back with quotes for some used pallet racking. That's in good shape yet. Help us organize the shop and keep it clean and get trip hazards off the floor and stuff like that. So that would be really nice to be able to get some of that. Travis Tookenhagen, I met with him today, Tookenhagen Construction. We looked at the northwest corner of the ambulance building. That north wall, there's an overhang above the windows there. And there was a kind of a small crack that developed that we noticed last fall, I believe, when he was putting in the new door. And that crack got noticeably bigger now. And Sarah Burton, the new ambulance manager, notified me. We looked at it, and Travis pretty much said, yeah, we got to get going on that ASAP. So he's going to start tearing that apart. I talked with Pat. He's unable to give us a quote because he doesn't know what it's going to entail yet.
Is it in the brick, or where is the crack?
It's, well, the plaster on the wall is cracked all the way.
Are you talking about inside?
Inside, right. But it could deal with some brickwork outside. That overhang must have issues where there's water getting in and coming down the wall and then settling on the window sill inside, so...
Kirby, I'm sorry, which building is this?
That's the ambulance building.
The which?
Ambulance building.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
On the northwest corner.
Yeah, they pretty much have a bedroom room there. It's not like it's used a lot, but still, it's a wall that you need. So he's going to start tearing into that tomorrow, and we'll know more details after he does that as to what they have to do. Let's see. Street light update. I'll be obtaining some free samples of the same product that we've been talking about, that we, the LED lights, that we put some of these up already. They seem to be the standard across the state for what cities use, and Excel uses, and MVEC. So I'll be getting a test sample of a post-top one and a head that we can use for both the highways, our major roadways, and residential. It has a dimmer selection on it, so you can kind of pick and choose. So I'm eager to test that out and see what, how that holds up or how it looks. But they recommended that. They said a lot of cities are using those, and everything works well with it, so...
Are we doing that before we figure out what?
Yeah, yep.
What we put out there to...
Exactly, yep. MVEC came back and recommended the same lights, Excel did. And this distribution company out of Eagan called Erby is who I'm kind of working with to get the sample. And this distribution company out of Eagan called Erby is who I'm kind of working with to get the samples. They said, yeah, that's just what people are using, that brand anyways. You can get different styles, but that brand, I guess, is really pretty much top-notch. And so far, their quotes are 50 to 70 bucks cheaper than a quote that I've gotten through another, like, electrical company, this distributor. So it might, you know, we can get the product through the installer. That's an option, but we might maybe want to order it through a distributor too and just have it delivered to our shop. It could be an option if it's that much cheaper, so...
How are you coming with the whole process of doing the street project this year? I know we've got... We have a loan available through Minnesota Valley Electric, and how is that all coming together? What do you have as far as deadlines or bidding?
I would look to Pat for that. I'm not sure.
Well, being that we've ordered some of the lights to kind of do a trial process, we're gonna start working on putting together that RFP. But we haven't had an opportunity yet to start drafting that RFP. We'll run it by Ross, and then we'll put it out there and see what the numbers come in at. So we'll give them a deadline. Hopefully, by that time, we'll know what lights, you know, we'll try them out. We'll see, you know, how intense they are and if those are the lights that work for both street lighting as well as for lights on Main Street.
Okay. And we have that loan from MVEC secured? I mean, they know we're going to...
They're aware that we're going to be applying for it, yes.
I got one question for you on those lights, Kirby. You said we could buy them individually and have somebody else put them up. Do we know that if we buy them from one company and have a different company put them up, granted, we're gonna say 50 to 70 dollars per light, will that company charge us more since we did not buy from them?
Get a quote for both.
That would be... We would need that quote probably, because we may be surprised they're gonna charge more money because we didn't do...
Yeah, yeah.
Versus doing all the business with one.
Yeah, cover both bases on that.
Yeah, because we don't want to get caught in that.
Okay.
Yeah, we got them for 50 bucks less, but we spent $100 extra in installation.
Sure.
Well, in the RFP, we'll ask them to, you know... We'll say that, you know, you don't have to provide both the installation as well as the lights if you want to break it out. But, yeah, we will look at all those options to see which is the least expensive.
Well, that's almost like two proposals that you're throwing out there. So I mean, for companies, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
For businesses to bid on it then, it's two separate bids.
Yep.
Twice the work for those businesses.
Whether we purchase the lights and they install them, or we purchase the lights and they don't install them, or we don't purchase the lights from them and they install them.
Or we purchase them and then they install them.
Throw it out there and see what we get.
Yep.
So...
Okay.
Yeah, I know. I guess I'd just finish up with street signs. We had a retro reflectivity swap-out of new street signs for stop signs and yield signs that we tried to finish up a couple of years ago. It's brought to my attention that those were not finished up yet. So I have 20 stop signs and 10 yield signs in the shop waiting to get up once it stops snowing and once it's not 30 below. We'll get on that, get those up. Also, brought to my attention, the pedestrian sign on Second Avenue and West Alden. I believe it's West Alden. The stop sign, or by the school there, that pedestrian sign is covering up the stop sign. So we'll have to do something about that. We're gonna get a yield sign back up by the hospital entryway, which was taken out for some construction. So got some sign work to do once the weather cooperates a little better and once we're freed up. Other than that, everything, from my perspective, is going well, so...
Any questions for Kirby?
Kirby, I have... On the ice rink, do we know how much use it is getting? Has anybody been up there late afternoon, early evenings, or on weekends to get an idea?
From what I've observed personally, it seems like it's quite a bit of use. Yeah, and when I talked to Jen Strack last, she said there's... You know, it's been some tough nights where it's been closed, but it sounds like it's getting used. We have to keep reapplying water on Fridays and Mondays to keep a good, you know, top on it, so kids are skating, so...
And she's able to find staff staffing?
Yeah, I got a... Yeah, I actually got a calendar today from the office. She must have found a couple high schoolers to sit there.
That's been an issue in the past.
Yeah, it looks like they'll be open most of the month, so...
She's having their quarterly meeting tonight. And so she usually has numbers of participants. So I would think I'll have that for you tonight.
Okay.
The next meeting.
That's about it? All right. Any more questions, council? Thank you, Kirby.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. It's been brought to my attention, I forgot something on the agenda, and that is, is there any citizens in the audience I wish to address the council at this time on any topic? Corey, did you have anything you want to speak about? No? You're just here to watch, huh? Thanks for coming.
You got so excited about the TSC building, right?
I did, yeah. It's been a three-year project. All right, hearing building report.
Council members, included in your packet is the summary of the Arlington 2018 Building Permit Report. As you can see, by looking at the numbers there, total valuation amount of $978,657 was applied for in 2008. Of that, the majority of permits pulled were for roofing, siding, and windows. A total of 45 permits were pulled for that. Under new construction, we do have one. I inquired with Darren Hassle, our building inspector, as to what that was. I was not aware that we had one, but he said that was probably for some pads for Northland Dry, that that was included in there. So I inquired with him as to whether or not he would be willing to come to a future council meeting to maybe share some of his insights on what's going on in Arlington with regards to building different projects, and he said he would be happy to. So I will probably include this in a future packet when Darren is here and can talk to you about what he's seeing out there in inspections and different things. Are there any questions based on those numbers that you would like me to share with Darren so that when he comes, he's ready to speak? Any issues?
Much bigger numbers than 10 years ago at this time, back in '09 when the stock market tanked and everything and things weren't going very well. There wasn't a lot of money floating around and...
I mean, it was almost a million dollars' worth of improvements last year to the city.
Yeah, that's something that is good to see. Any questions on the...
I'd like to see a whole bunch of more new construction for 2019.
I think we all would.
Well, I think a number of us are working on that, right, Jim?
That's right.
All right, moving on to ordinances and resolutions. There are no ordinances, but there is a resolution. Approve or deny Resolution 10-2019 ratifying additional mayoral appointment.
Council members, Mayor Nagel has identified an individual to fill the remainder of the vacant term on the Library Committee. So very thankful to Sheila Arneson for stepping up and agreeing to fill the Library Committee term, which would be a two-year term. So pending your approval of this, we will notify Sheila and congratulate her on her new committee appointment on the Library Committee.
We'll introduce Resolution Number 10-2019, Resolution Ratifying Additional Mayoral Appointment.
Second. What, over here? Haddelstedt?
That doesn't matter.
Yeah, you've got making up to do, so we're gonna pull you into these whenever we can.
I forgot about that.
Did I miss something?
Resolution 10-2019 is introduced by Councilmember Batchelor, second by Councilmember Haddelstedt, and that is a resolution ratifying additional mayoral appointment, and that would be specifically Sheila Arneson to a two-year term on the Library Committee. Discussion, questions? Vote by rule call, Councilmember Yashewski.
Yeah.
Councilmember Haddelstedt.
Yes.
Councilmember Batchelor.
Yes.
Councilmember Highland.
Yes.
Councilmember Cowell.
Yes.
All voting in favor, none against. The resolution is adopted. All right, moving on to unfinished business. Item 10, discussion regarding the results of the ESI Engineering Study.
Council members, I thought for purposes of the public, we could just highlight some of the points that, from our earlier discussion with staff from ESI Engineering, the company that did the noise level testing with regards to Northland Dry. We had present at that meeting, we also had Josh Howell, who is part owner of Northland Dry. He was on our discussion by phone, and we talked about some of the challenges and issues. The bottom line is that the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency has limits in terms of the noise level. The property that Northland Dry occupies is an industrial site. However, where it butts up to the residential level, it has to meet the residential noise level limits. Those noise levels have to be at... During the nighttime, has to be at 50 decibels, and during the daytime, it has to be at 60. The results of the study concluded that the noise coming from Northland Dry was in excess of that. And so the council and Northland Dry, as well as ESI engineers, had some discussion about what is causing the noise and options for going forward from there. I believe that Northland Dry was made fully aware of the fact that they need to somehow bring that noise level down to a lower level, which the council stressed, the faster we can do it, the better. The better it'll be for everybody. And so we will continue to keep the public informed as we become aware of different things that they're doing and steps that they're taking to try and quiet down the noise that's coming off of their stack. Anything that anybody wishes to add to that?
One encouraging piece that I got from it is that Northland Dry was willing to do something right now to alleviate at least something, and then moving forward and having somebody look directly at their motor and their stack to see exactly where the noise is coming from so that they can address it even further. And the timeline was kind of disappointing, but hopefully, within three months, we should have it all under control.
Any other comments anyone would like to make regarding Northland Dry?
No, I won't.
You're gonna stifle yourself, huh? All right, hearing none, we will move on to approve or deny Administrator Melvin's 2018 Performance Evaluation Summary.
Council members, you're free at this time if you care to make any changes or revisions to the brief summary. Again, this is just a summary of some of the discussion that occurred at the previous council meeting on January 22nd, 2019, during a closed session.
Okay, open for comments, discussion? I think it's pretty well included in the item that was in your packet. Again, for those that might be listening or watching, Mr. Melvin's job rating was fully competent. There are some areas that were discussed that need improvement, some areas that he's doing a terrific job in. And so going forward, we feel things are laid out quite well in what needs to be accomplished this year. And I would open it up to the council if there's any other comments you want to make.
I guess I would make a motion to approve Administrator Pat Melvin's 2018 Performance Evaluation Summary.
Second.
Did we want to include the salary adjustment in that, or is that going to be a second?
I think that was already previously...
It was?
Yes.
Okay, all right. All right, then there is a motion and a second to approve the Performance Evaluation Summary that was included in your packets, and that is a result of the evaluation process that took place over the past month or so. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion's carried. Okay, move on to new business, approve or deny contractor's estimate number two regarding the cemetery roadway improvements.
This is relation to the new road, as well as some work that was being done on the existing road out there at the cemetery. There were some concerns because the road... The new portion of the road tends to be a little wavy in some areas and water pools. Because Kirby had those concerns, we got together, and when I say "we", Mayor Nagel, myself, Kirby, got together with Jason Femrite, as well as Nielsen Blacktopping, to take a look specifically at those areas. Jason Femrite, the city engineer, took a look at that and said that, you know, that was part of what was out of their control in terms of, we put a road there, we didn't do a lot of preparation to the base. If we would have done that, there would have been significantly more expense involved. And so from Jason Femrite's perspective, what the work that was performed in the condition of the road is basically what we had called for in our project. So, yeah, we would prefer not to have those little valleys where the water pools, but some of those things would have required a more significant road project, more expensive.
So I have a question regarding that. I remember when we were talking about doing the project within the cemetery, we talked about doing it cheaply and not digging down and not throwing in gravel and doing all that stuff. But we decided against that to spend the extra money to do it, correct? So we built the base of the road, we spent the extra money on the road.
No, we did not.
We did not.
That was my understanding. This project occurred before my time, but in speaking with Jason Femrite, he said that, based on what we ordered, we could not hold them responsible for the base. If they would have prepared the base better, you would have been able to eliminate some of those roles. But Jason said that we opted not to go with that higher expense. So I can certainly double back and check in with Jason and say, are you sure that we didn't? And I can look back in the minutes and see when this was approved to see if it was acknowledged in there that it was the less expensive option. If you wish to table it, that could certainly be reviewed.
I'd like to make sure that that's the decision that was made on it. I mean, I remember talking about the cemetery road. I honestly don't remember the outcome, what we decided for it, as far as how they were supposed to build the road.
Well, I think they would have, you know, if we would have... If they would have built it like a normal six-ton, seven-ton road or whatever, they would have excavated deeper. six-ton, seven-ton road, or whatever, they would've excavated deeper, and, you know, a bigger base.
Well, I mean, I know they threw out a couple proposals at us, like one doing, pretty much scraping the grass and throwing some, some stuff on, some asphalt down there, and then the other one actually having a nice base. I mean, and the amount of traffic that's on that road isn't, isn't, isn't high anyhow, so I mean.
And they did, I was, I was out there when they were, you know, and looked in a few times as they were putting it down, and they did, they were down probably about that far below the grass level with excavation, and then brought it back up with gravel, to what, to what typically a four-inch by two minutes on, on top of that, so.
So, um, can, how about this, can we approve it on the basis as if what we ordered was what they're stating that it was?
Subject to review by Jason Femrite.
Yep, and if that's the case, then we approve it?
And I thought he had, didn't he? And of course, that's what this, that's what this letter does.
Yep.
It certifies that it's.
But I would like to look in our minutes to see if that's exactly what we ordered. And if that's correct, then pay, yeah.
Would that, approve it now, or just table it, or which, what did the council approve with that condition?
This is kind of an outstanding, if, I would suggest that we follow Michelle's recommendation to do it.
I'd second it.
Approval pending.
Okay, um, motion was made by Michelle? Is that correct?
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay, and second by Tom?
Jim.
Don't fight over it, no.
I don't want nothing to do with it.
Motion by Councilmember Batchor, second by Councilmember Hattelstedt, to approve the payment of estimate number two, the final amount of four thousand, ten dollars and eighty-eight cents to Nielsen Blacktopping for the two thousand and seventeen cemetery roadway improvements, pending Administrator Melvin's examining the minutes and documents from the time the contract was approved back in two thousand and seventeen, I presume. Okay, with that in mind, is there any more questions, comments? All, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carried. Item number thirteen, approve or deny contractor's final payment in request of seven thou, seventy thousand eight dollars, forty-three cents to OMG, and that's for the two thousand and seventeen street utility improvement project. Councilmembers.
Councilmembers, you may recall that there were some issues, and that's the reason why this continued to be outstanding. There were some issues with the seeding and the grass growth along the Boulevard. Primarily had complaints from, from one individual. They did come back, they did reseed. Jason and others have taken a look, and we believe that, that has all been resolved at this point, so. Looking for your authorization to go ahead and to pay that final amount on the two thousand and seventeen street utility improvement project.
There's still an issue with the fire department with this amount?
Yeah.
That hasn't been repaired, or was repaired, right?
They tried to repair it, it was clogging, but the clogging all, I don't know.
I know, that was mentioned to me earlier too, that that really wasn't, I think Jason's the one that mentioned to me that really hasn't been repaired to, to his liking yet. Personally, I have some hesitation to approve it because of the grass that was seeded late last summer, and wondering, you know, what's it gonna look like this spring? How's it gonna, we really don't know.
Yeah, I don't know how you can tell the grass took in the middle of January.
No, you can't.
Yeah, but you're also gonna have some die off. I mean, it's just because normal.
Just normal, yeah. They, you were some.
But I mean, and that's not a, I, I don't, I think a lot of the grass took, so I don't think that's as big of a deal as the concrete by the firehouse, because I mean, you just don't know how much that's gonna cost. I, I hate holding money back, especially this kind of money.
That's why.
But I don't want to pay it, because then they'll walk away and not do the work.
That's why we hold it back, and we're allowed to hold it back.
Yeah.
Can we, can we hold back like twenty thousand dollars for the fire department repair and the grass?
Well, that doesn't give them much motivation, does it?
Twenty thousand?
To get the work done.
If they don't do it, twenty thousand dollars, get the work done.
I think what's outstanding now is motivation.
More, you put more.
I mean, I think the whole purpose of this, holding money back, is to hold it back till the project is completely done, so I mean.
Correct.
I think we should either hold it all or pay it.
Yeah. I would tend to agree.
I'll make a motion to deny contractor's final payment request in the amount of seventy thousand eight dollars and forty-three cents to OMG Midwest Inc. for work on the two thousand and seventeen street utility improvement project.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Hattelstedt, second by Councilmember Batchor, to deny the contractor's final payment to OMG in the amount of seventy thousand eight dollars and forty-three cents, pending, or it's being held back, I should say, to ensure that the final items in the project have been completed.
And just to confirm, so those two items are the apron on the, is that the third garage, or second garage door there?
First and second.
The first and the second?
From the man door, going towards the east.
So west side?
First and second, okay.
And grass, any, Galen was the one who.
Boulevard.
Galen was one, the Boulevard, I looked, after they had been there seeding, I looked at the, and you could tell where they were with the, being the tracks of the, they did a slit cedar, which is a power-type slit cedar, and there were no tracks on the Boulevard on the south side of Alden, in the block across from the TSE building. There were no tracks there, and the grass was pretty sparse, so they just plain missed that.
If they slit cedar, you'd have seen it.
Yeah, oh yeah, yeah.
You'd have known they were there.
Okay, so those areas should be looked into further this spring for possible approval at that time, if they're.
Now, that's the area that I looked at or noticed, they're very, I mean, they should, they should actually examine the whole project to see that, that there's sufficient grass coming. Okay. Everyone clear on the motion then? Did we vote on it? No, we did not vote on it. Vote, the motion is to deny. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no?
No.
Motion passes on a four to one vote to deny the payment. All right, item fourteen, approve or deny Rachel Holland and Quinn O'Reilly of Melkert of Waconia for appointment as alternate city attorney.
Councilmembers, just wanted to give you a brief update on a discussion that Mayor Nagel, Attorney Arneson, and myself had a discussion the other day, talking about how sometimes there may be a perceived conflict of interest, being that Ross's family has ownership in a lot of land surrounding Arlington, and with the idea that to avoid any perception of conflict of interest, that maybe it'd be a good idea for the city to have an alternate city attorney. Ross was in support of that, and suggested several individuals that we should consider. We took a look at three different ones, including Aaron Walton, I'm not sure if Henderson or.
Nelson and Jones.
Nelson and Jones.
Thank you. Nelson and Jones, as well as Melkert Hubert Sodin, out of Waconia. We met with those three groups, two said that they were very interested, and based on the knowledge and brief discussion, Mayor Nagel and myself are recommending that we move forward with Melkert, Hubert, Sodin, and working with Rachel Holland and Quinn O'Reilly. Any thing you care to add?
No, I think that covers it. You were especially impressed with the Quinn O'Reilly, because of course, an Irishman, you know.
That doesn't disqualify him.
I tried to talk him out of it, but no, he said, this O'Reilly guy is a good guy.
We'll hold you to that, Mr. Melvin.
You invited us out on St. Patrick's Day.
There's no retention or anything like that, holding them, it's just like as needed, we pay the hourly rate, correct?
Yep.
Yeah, I may comment, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, my wife's family does hold land, particularly the east and northeast borders of the city, and if it were to come up, the city would get into negotiation to acquire any of that land for possible industrial development. I, I think I would have a clear conflict of interest and would not be able to represent either the city or my wife's family, so that would leave the city with a void as far as legal representation, and that's why I think it's, it's a good idea to address this in advance. Now, your family isn't gonna hire Melkert out of Waconia, are they?
They have them on a retainer at this time.
I'll make a motion to approve the Rachel Holland and Quinn O'Reilly with Melkert Hubert and So, Sojin Office out of Waconia as our alternative attorney.
I'll second it.
Okay, motion by Councilmember Batchor, second by Councilmember Yashewski, to approve the, or to approve the contract, or I should say hiring, not no contract involved, hiring Rachel Holland and Quinn O'Reilly from Melkert Hubert Sojin Office in Waconia for appointment as our alternate city attorney. Is there further discussion?
Just a question, would that be appropriate to put onto our list of appointed positions? And that way, each year it's renewed without having to have a special motion outside of.
Outside of, outside of that resolution, once you.
Would that be reasonable, Ross?
Sure, would make sense.
Yeah, I think that should be included, that's a good idea. Okay, any other? Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Motion carried, and then it will become part of the, I believe it's eight dash twenty nineteen resolution with the listing of all city employees and appointments. All right, item fifteen, we took care of that already, and that is the TSE building. Item sixteen, authorization for fire department to proceed with purchase of tanker truck.
Save the best for last, John.
Thanks for having me in. About this time last year, I brought up briefly about a tanker that we'd be needing in two thousand and twenty with the city council and the townships. After the meeting with the council and township, I started making some phone calls, and for August budget, I started projecting what this truck was gonna cost for Pat, for the budget, and I projected the truck would come in at three twenty-five, three hundred and twenty-five thousand. Well, in August, we formed a truck committee. September, we had our first meeting. I, it's myself and six other firemen. I gave the task to each firefighter to go seek out a vendor, get a price on a truck. What we found out out of six vendors, only two can build a tanker that will fit our haul. Twenty-eight foot, six inches is a max we can go for a truck, so that brought us down to two vendors. The first quote we got in came in at three twenty-five. Right now, Freightliner is sold out of two thousand and twenty trucks already. So, if we want to proceed, it would be a Peterbilt truck, and in the month of March, we'd have to actually make the purchase of the chassis for two thousand and twenty. The reason I'm here, the, this is the specs on the truck from one vendor. I have another set like this from, we actually, I'll back up a little bit. So we contacted Rosenbauer Custom Fire, Midwest Fire, US Tanker, Great Plains, and Danko. Rosenbauer and Custom Fire are the only ones that can build us a truck that'll fit in our haul. I don't think you want me to ask for a new haul. So, what I need is if we're supposed to move forward, because we have to take the Rosenbauer and the Custom Fire and do a page-by-page turn on the specs. It's not like buying a car or pickup. We have to spec the tires, the rear ends, the axles, everything on the truck has to be spec. We've done it roughly, so that we could get to this far. So, Rosenbauer was so kind, they drew a picture up of what the truck would look. This would be a thirty-five-hundred gallon tanker. The reason we want to go to a thirty-five versus what we have is a two thousand, is the speed limit's now by NFPA, or sixty miles an hour for a tanker, so when we're going out to like Rush River or out to fifteen, that's like having two trucks show up at once, so that's huge for the rural area. And our last tanker we built was a thirty-five-hundred. The truck we'd be replacing would be a nineteen ninety Ford. We've had the frame fixed on it three times. Chrysler told me that the next time we bring it in, they will red-tag it, it won't leave unless it's on a tow truck. In two thousand and sixteen, we decommissioned the pump on it, because the pump needed ten thousand dollars worth of repair. So tonight, I need to know if we're gonna move forward or not. I did do some checking back. If you remember, in two thousand and fourteen, we joined a company out of Texas, so we could get a better price on that engine. Well, there's a, there's a, I don't know if you're familiar with it, Pass Sourcewell. It used to be formerly called NJPA. We can join that, and that will knock Rosenbauer's price off down right away before we do any cuts. Doesn't cost anything for us to join it. I'd have to know if you want me to join it as a fire department, or if you want to join it as the City of Arlington, because you can buy police cars, ambulances, paper products, anything nationally sold, you can buy from, through them.
What's the name of it again?
Sourcewell.
You should check in, see if we're already a member of that, because.
We're not.
Because we did that when we were, when we purchased the ambulance, we became a member, or the COT, the power COT. We became a member of.
We had just checked.
Co-op of some sort.
Yeah, we had just checked, and they're, the only, only entity in Sibley County that's a member of this is Sibley East.
And that's a company that's based out of Staples, Minnesota?
Yes.
Familiar with it. They, they just went through a name change during last year.
Oh.
They're a Minnesota company too, aren't they?
Minnesota company.
John, who knows where their corporate is?
No, I think it's Staples.
I, I think it is, but I, I can't say it for a hundred percent. I have all the contact information. I did meet with the townships for their, the township meeting, and they gave, basically gave me the green light to not to exceed three hundred and twenty-five thousand. Couple of them wanted me to get it down to two hundred and twenty-five thousand. If I was able to cut a hundred thousand dollars off of a truck, I don't think I'd be here right now. I, I, I know we can get the number down, I just don't know how far we can get it down. You know, I, when I was here a year or so ago for that pickup, I came three times to the council. If you remember, we went from a seventeen to an eighteen, and we dropped the price of the truck by waiting one year, and we ended up building that truck for a little over forty-seven thousand, which was only forty-five thousand divided between the townships and the council. Relief Association, through their block party, picked up the additional, along with a lot of donated equipment on that truck.
Okay, so you need authorization to move forward.
And with that authorization, if, if we do a truck, and you agree to, say I come back the nineteenth, and I got the truck down to three hundred thousand. In the past, when we bought trucks, when the chassis comes in, the city always pays for it, so they don't have to pay the vendor interest on that chassis. So that, that would hit in two thousand and nineteen, that chassis would come in probably in fall. But the truck, we actually wouldn't take possession of it until probably April of two thousand and twenty. They're talking twelve to fourteen months to build a truck.
And how much would the chassis, is that, how much is that gonna run?
Well, that's what we gotta do, the page-by-page turn, because right now, there's a thirty thousand dollars. Well, that's what we gotta do, the page by page turn, because right now there's a thirty thousand dollars difference on the chassis. So we have to look at, you know, did one figure eighteen thousand front axles, one twenty thousand, one figure forty-eight thousand rear axles, one figure fifty-two, one figure a four fifty diesel, one figure three fifty. Just on the diesel motor alone, there's a ten thousand dollar swing. So until we do the page by page turn, I won't know.
Well, I'm not sure what our budget looks like as far as what we have available this year and moving forward, putting that on bond or whatever for upcoming. I guess that's my biggest concern if we have money.
Just, just so you're aware, that if the trend continues, this truck that is coming in at three twenty-five, it's averaging a seven and a half percent increase a year. The two vendors that built our last two trucks no longer, or two, last two tankers no longer exist. So your market is getting smaller and they know it. So the same truck could come in at three hundred and fifty.
And I, and I get that we need to replace, but we also have to be responsible and know that we have money to be able to do it. I guess is my only real big concern.
And some of the, some of the questions that we've gotten from the township too is inquiring about whether or not they can, uh, uh, we can bond and then they can pay us back over a, a five-year period, which typically we have done in the past for some of these larger vehicles, uh, is that we will find out who they are and then bond for that money and then charge them back so that, uh, we cover our expenses for that bond, whatever that interest rate is. So.
Do, do we know? Is it on our CIP? Do we know that it's slated for and even?
Yes, we've, we've, we've had it on there for
Probably ten years.
For some time.
So we have it on there.
Well, the question would be the money in the twenty nineteen budget though, too, to pay for the chassis. And I guess if we have to pay some interest or whatever, if we don't have the money in the budget.
We would bond for it. Typically what we've done in the past is we bonded for significant.
So in your opinion, it's doable to make part of this commitment in twenty nineteen?
Yes, I believe so. It's been something that
You'd know it was coming, yeah.
Do we have to know that right now? I mean, whether we're gonna pay some in twenty nineteen, I mean.
Well, we already have the twenty nineteen budget approved.
Well, I know that, but do we have to know whether or not, I mean, because we don't have to pay for that, right? I mean, we could wait till the end and bond the whole thing.
Well, typically we bought the chassis when it came in, we paid for it. Because then otherwise, if the vendor takes it, he might charge us ten percent if he's gonna carry it.
How much would the bonds cost us?
It, it depends on, depends on the day and the rates that you get. I don't know.
And can we bond for the whole thing?
Before we?
Before we get it?
How do we know the finished price?
I, I will look into that and find out from Shannon Sweeney. What, what our options are.
I mean, I
But if we'd have to pay cash for the chassis? I think I wanna hear you say it's doable.
We're gonna a hundred thousand dollars or?
Somewhere between a hundred and ten and a hundred and thirty thousand. That's why they're such bigs.
For the chassis?
Oh, say that again, John, how much?
Between a hundred and ten and a hundred and thirty thousand for the chassis.
Which would be paid with twenty nineteen money.
I know we didn't budget that. There's no line at a hundred and thirty thousand in our budget for that.
No. No, and we, we spent, spent money in two thousand and, and nineteen's budget, so, um, no, I, I'm not going to say that we've got a hundred and ten to a hundred and thirty thousand sitting around for this. But I will look into bonding and what our options are there if we can bond to the full amount in twenty nineteen in advance.
Yeah, do you know what the price of the truck is gonna be? I mean, or is that gonna change as we get closer to?
The max it would be, so when I gave the guys the direction on the truck, I said, build the truck the way you'd want it. That's the way we've always done our trucks. And then when it comes, I look at the numbers and I say, no, no, we gotta cut back. So that's the max it would be is three twenty-five. My ultimate goal would be to get under three hundred thousand, but until we go a page by page turn.
But when, once you get that done, once you do your page by page and you order the truck, do you know exactly how much that truck is gonna cost?
Correct.
Okay, so then at that point, then we could bond then in twenty nineteen, right, for the whole amount? I'm just trying to find a way to pay for it so that you get your chassis paid for for it. And then, because we don't have line items for a hundred thousand.
Once he orders, it won't know what the price is. I don't know that we'll be able to.
Right, so we'll know.
I'll check with Shannon Sweeney and send the email out to everyone.
Okay.
So I think what John is looking for, because of a time crunch, you need to get it probably ordered by March, if we're gonna do it this year.
And I don't wanna have myself and six guys spend hour after hour doing a page by page turn for nothing.
But you should figure that Shannon Sweeney should be able to tell a short thing.
Yeah, you know, we, I can
In a week, we know that, so on the nineteenth
We can do it at our next meeting?
In February, and we still have time for, I know I might be putting in a volume, but until we know we can get the money. Unless you wanna float the city alone.
Well, I'm, I'm just thinking, how, why doesn't the city do like the townships? They have a running account with money for the fire department every year.
We have a budget for the fire department, but I don't think we have a extra hundred thousand dollars on there to pay for a chassis.
Well, we had it for twenty twenty. That's what we had.
We had it slated for twenty twenty.
We didn't, twenty twenty, we didn't realize that where there was some going to be coming in twenty nineteen. It's not saying we can't do it, it's just a matter of we need to look into what the best way is to
So, yeah, so bonds fall off and then we can pick up new ones, so we can start making those payments. So we have one falling off in twenty twenty and then this one will come on. So I know we're planning on doing it. It's just a matter of how we get there, right?
Well, and I will let you know that by doing the two thousand nineteen street improvement project, we had several bonds that are falling off in twenty nineteen. By doing the two thousand nineteen street improvement project, we basically used up what would have fallen off so that we're staying at a level amount of debt.
Yeah, that street project eliminated those
Yeah.
so-called gains when it was the street project.
Correct, yeah.
If I remember right, there was something in the budget of, on a line item for a fire department truck.
In twenty nineteen, in twenty twenty, probably.
I remember seeing a line item veto somewhere in the budget. Not a veto, a line item.
Line item, yeah.
For a tanker.
Well, can we, uh, table it until our next meeting, which is February twenty-second?
And I, I will get an email to you.
Or nineteenth, nineteenth, nineteenth.
Does that, does that give you enough time though, John, if we wait till then to meet with your guys after that before you have to order it?
That's cutting it tight.
I mean, I, I, I don't know, I think we should, I guess, I don't think we have a choice. I mean, we budgeted for this for twenty twenty for a long time. And when, when we asked Shannon Sweeney if we could afford the twenty nineteen project, we gave him the CIP plan that included that
So he knew it was in there.
That, on there, so I think he knew, you know, that, that was coming. So I, I don't know, I just, I don't think we have a choice. But yeah, otherwise we'll have a tanker, or the one, I mean, we just
I'm just really nervous because of how the, the budget process went last year. I'm really not confident on where we stand. So until I get like a this is a go type thing. I mean, twenty twenty, if we have to pay interest on the chassis, if whatever. I mean, I think we're gonna do it in twenty twenty.
Well, then I think we should approve. I guess I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the fire department to go ahead and proceed with, uh, the tanker to figure out the bonding, maybe at the next meeting or how we're gonna pay for it at the next meeting, but.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Collins, second by Councilmember Highland to authorize the fire department to proceed with the purchase of tanker truck, chassis in twenty nineteen. And that's, is that, am I saying that right then? The chassis in twenty nineteen?
It'd be a twenty twenty chassis purchased in twenty nineteen and the whole truck would become a twenty twenty and twenty twenty.
Right, okay.
If that makes sense.
Okay, but this purch, purchase that we're authorizing though is, is what we absolutely need to authorize to be purchased in twenty nineteen in order to get the ball rolling.
Right, and then I would have to come back to council to get approval to buy from either Rosenbauer or custom the rest of the truck.
And that would be a twenty twenty expenditure.
That would hit, yes.
Okay.
But we'd have to sign a contract in twenty nineteen for the twenty twenty truck.
Okay, everyone understand the motion now?
One question.
Yes.
We can get this bonding for sure, this bond for this for sure. We're going to for sure have these funds to pay for this.
Yes, I will send an email to Shannon Sweeney. Yes, you can bond for additional funds.
Well, okay, you might want, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Ross.
What I wanna ask him about is an equipment certificate. That's a special provision in the law where you don't have to go through the bonding process. It's basically a, uh, a way of getting a bank loan, you avoid the bond costs. But what I'm fuzzy about is if that's, uh, you know, the interest on that is tax-free. You know, that, that has to do with the cost of the interest. You know, that's why bonding usually get at a lower interest rate because whoever buys the bond, uh, doesn't have to pay income tax on the interest. But I know the city has used an equipment certificate approach to buy a truck or police car or something like that in the past. It's been a number of years. But I think it was in a situation where, you know, for budgetary reasons and to avoid the cost of, uh, generating a bond for a relatively small amount of money, you know, I think that's why they have this equipment certificate in the, in the law.
And I think we have a couple of equipment certificates out there right now.
That, yeah, I, I know the city's used that, that approach in the past, but, uh, again, it's been a while and I'm a little fuzzy about how that works.
I, I mean, I don't wanna put you and John, you and a couple other guys that are, you know, stressed trying to, you know, go page by page by page, but I mean, I gotta, if, if we're gonna make a payment of a hundred and, up to a hundred and thirty thousand dollars this year and it's not in our budget to make that payment, I mean, how can you write a check? How can you do that? You can't.
That's not my, not That's not really my motion though. I mean, my, my motion is to approve going forward with the process. I mean, he needs to know now if we're gonna purchase the truck or not, if we're gonna pay for the chassis in twenty nineteen. We can decide that at the next meeting. We don't need to decide that today, I don't think.
But we have to pay for that in twenty nineteen, don't we?
Well, unless we have the vendor carry it.
At, at an additional cost.
An additional cost, or you, you have the option to wait until twenty twenty-one, but you're looking at probably a seven and a half percent increase.
Well, I don't think we wanna win. I think that's, that's the point here.
Right, and that's what my motion was intended to give him, the opportunity to meet with his people so that he has time before, because we don't wanna miss out on the chassis, otherwise we're at, you know, there's seven and a half and the chassis has to be in by March.
And another year.
Right.
Okay, done with discussion. We do have a motion. The motion is to authorize the department to proceed with the purchase of a tanker truck, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, start that process. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose no? I didn't hear everybody voting. Can I say it was unanimous? Did everyone vote?
I voted.
Michelle?
Yeah.
Okay. Motion's carried unanimously. All right.
I have one question. So do you wanna, does, does the city wanna join Sourcewell or should I? Because before I do any cuts on this truck, I'd like to get the numbers from that because that sounds like it's gonna be a big difference in the value of the truck.
We can save on squad cars and public works, cars, trucks.
I think the city should.
If, if it's free, there's no reason not to.
There's nothing to join it.
I don't know. Do we want to, do we wanna have the city do it and not against you, but let's say you are here two years from now.
That's what I'm asking.
Sure, I think it's something to go with the city.
So you don't have to renew it or anything else.
I don't think you'll be offended.
Well, I think the cit, the whole city can
Can benefit.
Can benefit that much.
I'll send you the email information, Pat.
Okay, thanks, John.
There's located in Staples, Minnesota. Is our headquarters.
You googled it, huh?
That's a Google site.
Thank you.
Thanks, John. All right, uh, moving on to item seventeen, discussion about the EDA planning committee workshop.
So we already established that we would have a workshop on February nineteenth for the council to set the goals. So, uh, if you would, please look at your calendars and let me know if you would prefer to have a workshop with the EDA committee as well as the planning committee on the twenty-first or the twenty-second to put together our joint two thousand and nineteen goals. To have further discussion with them about, you know, how we can work together, together better.
Um, the twenty-second is gonna be the conference.
We'll get the conference up at Brainerd.
Yeah, we're gonna be on.
So even, yeah.
Twenty-first, what day of the week is twenty-fourth?
Thursday.
So Thursday would work, Friday would not. We'll be up at that conference, number of us.
Four of us. Okay, that works.
I'm fine with the twenty-first.
Thursday, the twenty-first.
Good.
What time?
What time are we?
Uh, five o'clock. Does that work?
I, I don't know. You should call, maybe, I mean, we're joining with
Does it work for you?
Yeah, that's fine for me. I mean, I don't know about the EDA.
Adam, does it work for you?
Same as tonight. If I'm busy, I can't make it, but I, I mean, if I'm not, I'll be here.
Uh, yeah, I don't know about the members of the EDA or
Yeah, yeah, because planning and zoning usually meets at seven.
Okay.
I mean, not saying that we push it back that far, just saying
Looks like we can
I think EDA, what time do we usually meet at? Five thirty?
Five thirty.
So, um
And, uh, that way Tim, Tim Kleckel gets there. Late, but he gets
I've got a rehearsal at six, seven.
At seven?
Mankato.
On the twenty-first? Okay.
Mankato.
I think it's gonna be tough to get the EDA, the planning committee, and the council.
Get everybody there if you need.
That's gonna be impossible.
I mean, the thing is, is that if we, if we're gonna go through our goals and, and what we as a council, um, want the zoning and the, and the, um, EDA to kinda drive by. If all those council members aren't there, I mean, it would be our voice going there anyhow, so.
Yeah, you'll have, you'll have your input, Ben, when we as a council get our goal set and then
On the nineteenth.
We can carry that forward in your absence. If you have a rehearsal, you have a rehearsal.
What time was that? Five?
I thought
You have to be determined.
You have to be determined, so.
Inquire with Amy and with Cynthia to see what time works best for their membership.
Yeah, because we gotta pick a date. Sooner or later, we'll be in July. Still trying to figure out what we're gonna do because we can't get a meeting together.
Yeah. We may just have to have a twenty-first, whatever, whoever can make it can make it.
Twenty?
Twenty-first.
Are you, are you gonna be in town yet? You're heading up to Brainerd, are you?
No, well, that meeting starts on Friday.
At noon, right?
Friday at noon, yeah, head up tomorrow morning, in the morning. All right. Any other discussion, any other items? Hearing none, um, motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Hattlested, second by Councilmember Highland to adjourn the meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And, uh, pose no? Meeting is adjourned at eight o'clock, straight up.